Good evening, everybody. We will call the meeting to order. Six thirty-one. It is Wednesday, August twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-four. All members are present with the exception of Mr. Carr, who let me know today, unfortunately, he could not be here this evening. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay, once again, good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. You may have noticed that we weren't originally scheduled to be here this evening, but something came up and the board wanted to come together and take the opportunity to interview a candidate for our Finance Director Town Accountant position, which has been open for quite some time now. And in fact, it's been several months since we've had a qualified applicant apply. So when one did, we certainly wanted to jump on this opportunity to interview our candidate this evening, who will be joining us momentarily. In fact, our applicant, I believe, is going to be joining us around seven P M. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you very much. And so we'll be doing that here live on television and in public, and I appreciate my colleagues coming together on short notice. Again, clearly, this was not as previously scheduled meeting before last week, when we did publicly and properly post this meeting. And it's agenda. So I thank you, and I'm totally understandable that one member could not be here tonight, because, again, this is not one of our regularly scheduled meetings. Before we take up our interview, which will hopefully start shortly, we do have just a couple of other items, and I wondered if we could take them out of order. I noticed that we don't have any communication tonight, and we do have a Board to Consider item, but this item was a request of one member who's not with us this evening, so I would be looking for a motion to table this item, so that the person looking to make this appointment could be here. So without objection, motion to table this item.
Motion to table this item.
Is there a second?
Second to table.
Thank you. And all those in favor? So that item will be tabled until our, hopefully, our next meeting, when I full conference. Does anybody have any announcements they'd like to make?
Welcome to back to school for all the kids in town and just, like I say, just remember, drivers out there, remember that you're going to see kids early in the morning and just be careful driving. There will also be some blue lights behind you if you're not careful. Wish all the kids and teachers and all the staff a great new, great school season, including yourself.
Thank you. Absolutely. Yeah, that's a great announcement. And yeah, it was very busy out there this morning. Run out early. This is very busy. Very good. A lot of excited kids. Anybody else? Anybody else for announcements? New business? Anybody have any new business? Okay, I would wonder if we could list off, I think we have some really important dates specifically around the MSBA project. Mr. Manager, would you mind reading off our important dates into the record?
Yes, Chair. So the important dates, so through October sixth, we'll have the farmer's market at the Town Common on Sundays from ten A M. to one P M. Also, very important, ongoing right now, we're having early voting. August twenty-sixth to August thirtieth, early voting is here at Town Hall in the auditorium from eight-thirty A M. to four-thirty P M. So if you haven't gotten out to vote and you have the opportunity, you don't want to avoid lines on a primary election day, please come down to Town Hall during eight-thirty to four-thirty until the thirtieth. Important note, September second, next Monday is Labor Day, so town offices will be closed. On September third, the following day, is state primary election. The polls open at seven o'clock A M. And close at eight o'clock P M. So good luck to all those state primary candidates. Then September ninth is our next regularly scheduled Select Ward meeting here at Town Hall, Room nine at seven o'clock P M. And then, as you mentioned, Mr. Chair, we've got three important dates coming up with regard to our School Building Committee and Elementary School Project. The first is the September seventeenth Wildwood School Building Committee meeting. That's going to be happening at Wellington High School at six-thirty P M. Then the following day, September eighteenth, we're going to have a Wildwood School Building Committee Community Forum, also Wellington High School in the auditorium at six-thirty P M. So folks have had a chance to come to one of these community forums in the past. We encourage you to come down and you'll be able to hear about the project, some of the proposals, and ask any questions you have to the members of the School Building Committee will be there. And then the following day, on September nineteenth, we'll be having the Wildwood School Building Senior Forum, which will be happening at the Senior Center at two o'clock P M. We encourage any seniors who have any questions about the, about the project to come. Both myself and the superintendent schools will be attending that on the nineteenth, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
I have one question. I have all three days. Are these in person or?
That is a very good question. These are in-person dates. There's also a hybrid format, I believe, for the, the community forum, so that you can participate in hybrid.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just have a question. For the September seventeenth Wildwood School Building Committee, you mean a community forum, will questions be taken, public comments at that? Just to clarify between the community forum, which obviously is directed more towards community, just so the residents know that they'll have opportunity to ask questions about that, or should they reserve?
Yeah, so I can just say, so the agenda hasn't been prepared for that, but in the past, I know that Dr. Brand, the school superintendent, who is the Chair of the School Building Committee, has allowed for public comment and questions during those, those meetings. So I would imagine that he would do so again.
That's a great question. Thank you. And also, I think it's important, we set this agenda on Monday, but since that time, too, we've become aware and we believe that October eighth will be the date that they will actually, the vote will be held. If you were watching last week, School Building Committee voted unanimously to postpone the vote. I think just maybe today, it was announced that the vote could potentially be on October eighth. So there'll be more information certainly about that coming out. We just want to put that on folks' radar. And all these dates are on our website. So there'll be more communication about coming out on social media and.
And kind of more importantly, I think we're going to have a flyer. It's going to go onto every resident that has all these dates on them, including the October eighth date, and a lot of information, or some really great information that was put together. Judy O'Connell, the Assistant Town Manager, has worked really hard over the last week to work on the flyer along with school staff, school department, who have really helped to put the flyer together, but it's going to be a mailer that's going to go out. I believe the, the target date for folks to get it is going to be around the sixth. So you should be getting that in the mail and a lot of.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Judy. Really appreciate all that communication that's going to be able to go out to residents. Okay. So lastly here before we move on is, is the public comments. We'll take that. Does anybody like to be heard? Any public comments this evening? Okay. Seeing or hearing any? All right. So as mentioned, our sole purpose really is to interview a candidate for our Finance Director Town Accountant, and we will hopefully do that. Our candidate is due to arrive momentarily. I would like to maybe motion for a recess where we can welcome the candidate and let them be comfortable, and then we will have the interview live here this evening. Is there a motion to recess?
Second. For recess?
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Okay, we are in recess at six forty-one and will return momentarily. Thank you. Okay. It is six fifty-seven. Now we call the meeting back to order. We've just come from a short recess as we've welcomed our applicant this evening. Ms. Frontier is here to, to interview for our Finance Director slash Town Accountant position, which we've had open for some time now. So first of all, thank you for being here and for navigating our parking lot on a busy night. Clearly, you were able to find a parking spot after some time, so it's a big night out there. The football team has a scrimmage against Reuben, so that's the reason. You may have thought it was all the people lined up to be here. But everybody's watching. I want, I want to let you know, first of all, that we're broadcasting live on our local cable access, W C T V, and we're also streaming online. We're using the Owl. Not sure if you're familiar, but when you start talking, the camera will be focused on you so they can hear you. And I just wanted to let you know that we are obviously live and recording. So welcome. And thank you for being here. Mr. Manager, did you want to set us up before we give her the opportunity to introduce herself and have questions in the committee? We have, we have had a vacancy for some time. My Mike Morris has been filling in, and that's how we've had a ride this evening.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So as folks are aware, the, the former Finance Director left back in February. And since that time, the position has been posted. We have, I've been here in June. One of the first things that Mike Morris said to me was, he believes he had a really talented candidate, that we should try to get here if possible. And so I was lucky enough to sit down with Stephanie. It feels like, because vacations, I think it was less than a month ago, but it was a few weeks ago, to talk a little bit about the job, and she indicated an interest and a willingness to come and interview in front of the slideboard. So I'll just turn it over to you, Mr. Chair, to start.
Great. Thank you. Once again, obviously, as was mentioned by the manager, impressive candidate here this evening, and so I want to start by giving you the opportunity to just introduce yourself to my fellow board members and to the community who's watching.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Frontier. I currently reside in Georgetown, and I'm excited to be here.
Very much. Well, we're excited to have you here to interview. So what I want to do is jump right into it, if you're okay. I'd like to open it up for board members to ask questions, and we can have a conversation. And any point you want to add something, just let us know.
Sure.
And we, thanks to our assistant manager, get some more of this. Please help yourself, okay? First of all, good evening. Long to Wellington.
I guess basically what I wondered is, is that in your current job, it looks like from your resume, if I may, since you're the Director of Finance for the classroom college school. And that's the school side as opposed to the town side. What do you feel the challenges are that you face, you know, now you're going into the town side?
Sure. So I've been in municipal government. I'm going on my thirteenth year. I started on the town side. I started for the town of Ipswich as Assistant Town Accountant many, many years ago. I was on the fast track there. My boss got very sick, and so I was promoted up very quickly in my career. After six months, I took on the Town Accountant and Finance Director role for the town of Ipswich. At that point in time, they decided to split the role. So I took on the Town Accountant role where I had been there for quite some time. They thought that would be a best fit for me in the point I was in my career. I then, from after working for the town of Ipswich for five years, an opportunity came up for the town of West Newbury as Business Manager Town Accountant. My degree is Business Management. I thought that that would be a great opportunity to work more on the side of internal controls as well as doing Town Accountant work. So I went to the town of Wellington, the town of West Newbury. It was a great. It was a great experience. I was there for three years. They went through a major software conversion. They went from software to Vadar, which is two systems that I had never worked with. I've always worked with Munis in my whole municipal career. So it was a bit of a challenge. I rolled up my sleeves and really learned a lot while I was there. What I was missing when I was there is we did not have a school system. We were, we just did not have one in the district. We were part of Penn Tucket, which is three towns. We gave an assessment. So I said to myself, the point of my career, I said, you know, it would be great for me to really learn the school finance side. That would, I'm a certified governmental accountant. It would be great to kind of understand school finances better. I understood them to a degree, but really kind of see what else was going on in the schools and how we could help and how I could kind of learn as much as possible and be part of Masbo. So I took the leap to the other side of the fence, just shy of two years ago, to kind of excel my career and learn on school finances. I took a step down when I went there as I was Town Accountant in my other role. It's been a great experience. I'm to the point now professionally that I'm ready to kind of use all of my skills I have and my knowledge and further that back in the town environment where I am most comfortable.
Thank you, Ms. West.
Please. Thank you for coming. It's great to have you here. I'm impressed by your resume. I think it's great that you do have experience on both the town and the school side of it. I think that's, that's excellent. I appreciate it. It was a great question that Mr. West asked. I also think it's great that you have so much Munis experience. That'll be huge for, for everybody, you know, in the department. I guess I'm looking, you know, what are you, what are your expectations for our staff in this role? So in this role, most of the communities I've worked with, I've had very limited staff. So I'm used to that. I am looking for, to have like an Assistant Town Accountant to help with some of the day-to-day finances. Other than that, I think I, you know, obviously have a payroll clerk and a cons payable clerk. When I was in West Newbury, we did not have a cons payable clerk. And we had a half-time payroll person. So the Town Accountant did all of that as well. And it made it very challenging when individuals went up to conferences for professional development as well as vacations, not having the bodies in the office. Yeah, well, you have an established staff here, which, so I think, you know, this is the purpose of this position, you're going to be well, you know, staffed already, which is great. So I'm like, can you start it? Well, but no, no, it's a, you know, I can be biased, but we do have a great staff here in all our departments. Yeah, that's all for me right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome to Longton. Question I have right now is, with all the construction that the town is putting forward, new school, new town hall, senior center, projects that we know are going to be coming due soon, finances is going to be tight. And would you be able to say to the town manager, no, we can't afford it? Or we have to borrow more to get this project done? How would you go about assisting in getting financing for these, all these different projects?
So currently, in the city of Gloucester, we just built a brand-new elementary school. We use the MSBA. We got a good chunk of money funding there. What we did is we merged two elementary schools into one, which just got complete. We had our first school year last year. In the new school, there was a bunch of challenges with finances. City of Gloucester doesn't have a lot of funding, so we had to look to a lot of borrowing for that project as well. And just keeping an open mind and keeping the communication open with the town manager, having those conversations upfront, seeing what's best for the Town of Wilmington. There's different avenues to borrow, making sure, I don't know which financial advisor the town works with, but it would be helpful, you know, ensuring that we're getting the best rates, working with the treasurer's office as well, and keeping that dialogue open to ensure that we're heading down the right path and trying to keep our reserves healthy as well through the process is important to me.
Currently, we, the town has just received AAA rating, which I know will help probably with that financing. But we want to keep that AAA. We don't want this to be a one-shot deal. Do you feel that you'd be able to work with our financial institutions in the town to regulate our funding so that we don't lose that AAA rating?
I do believe so. The last community I was in, Town of West Newbury, I actually got them up to the AAA rating. It was the first time ever. It took a lot, it took a lot of work. We had to make sure our internal controls were in check. We kept our balances at a, you know, level funded, not dipping too low. And I feel I can do that for sure. There will be times, though, like I said, like we really have to step back and we might, I might have to say, you know, this might not be a good idea. We kind of come up with other avenues just to make sure that we stay financially stable.
Great, thank you. Before I go into further, forgive me, I failed to mention that Brently and Mr. Cutler could not be here this evening. Brentley couldn't afford, but I hope you could understand that. This was a, this wasn't originally scheduled meeting, so it's understandable that he couldn't be here. So thank you for bringing up the AAA bond rating because I don't want to be the person who takes on this position and then have, be expected to maintain that very well into the future. But yeah, speaking of that, a lot of that is a result of excellent planning and wonderful staff that we've had here over the years, long before I arrived. And a lot of it has to do with the healthy reserves, which, you know, on the school side is what E and D, you know, we call free cash. And so oftentimes, and I know in your research in Wilmington, you probably are well aware, you have a healthy amount of free cash and you want $30 million and also some in our capital stabilization fund. So it's pretty regularly that we'll get questions about, you know, why can't we dip into that? Why can't we just use that? You've got all this money stockpiled, can we use it for this or that? So I wondered, you know, if a board member calls you and asks you that very question or a resident came in and wanted to ask, why can't we just use that? Have you thought about how you might explain the importance of free cash or you have access to the efficiency on the school side?
Yeah, it's, it's really important to kind of go through, you know, the balance and why we have it and the reasons why we want to keep it at a certain balance to maintain the AAA bond rating as well as like explaining if we go below a certain percentage, it can change our financial picture. And I've always been, at least in my professional career, really able to kind of explain things in a different manner. Not everyone is from a finance background and it's important to realize that. I've, even in the school side of things, I have school committee members coming up to me quite frequently, asking different questions on grants, our account balances and stabilization, and just trying to explain in other manners, you know, and not be afraid to get those questions. That might be difficult working with the residents.
Right, I think that's really important because I think that, you know, given the opportunity, that would be a question you probably would receive pretty frequently, right? You know, again, hit it right on the head. Not everyone is a finance expert, but everybody is under, is able to understand what's on their tax bill, right?
Exactly.
Of their spending every, every month. So I think that'd be really important because we're really proud of the work that our staff has done to be able to achieve that AAA monitoring. We'd love to keep it going, but we understand that there are people who are, you know, in a tough spot. People are really kind of hurting, some people, we won't talk families, who are paycheck to paycheck saying, why is this stockpiled when I could be using elsewhere? So.
It's also really, yeah, and it's also really important to keep an eye on the revenues that this position is forecasting, just to make sure that, you know, we're following the same method that was used in the past. It seems, I was going through kind of the financial statements and the budget, and it seems like, you know, this community always receives a lot more revenues than projected, which is great. That's a good way to keep free cash high.
You know, indulge me, I just want to cover myself for anybody who's watching at home. We do, I think, almost annually, a town meeting uses monies from free cash.
Exactly, yeah, sure, yeah.
Say small, but it is pretty regularly, almost annually, for anybody who's watching at home. I see it as real positive that you're coming from a school district, given that, you know, like most communities, almost 50% of our budget comes from the school side, the school department. And I wondered if you wanted, if you agreed or if you wanted to speak to that. Be a strength, my mind, for someone to have such, you know, understanding of that side.
I think it's a real strength, to be honest with you. I'm part of the Mass Municipal Auditors and Accountants Group, where I'm on the executive board there. There is no one that I know of that's been on both sides to the extent that I have. Some people kind of started on the school and when I went kind of later in my career where I could have a better understanding. I think it's really helpful, too. So when the school comes to the town and asks for specific needs that the Finance Director really understands kind of where they're coming from and able to kind of dig into the finances as well from Desi, really get a better understanding of what they're asking for. Because in my past, being from the other side of the fence from the town side, I always had the schools coming to me, with the exception of West Newbury. But in Ipswich, you know, they always had higher needs and it was very difficult to really understand why and what was needed to run the education. And we always wanted the best for our citizens and the community.
I think that could potentially be a very big positive. Mr. Manager, do you want to add anything? Is there anything you'd like to ask?
Sure, no, I, I do have the benefit of, like I said, now, as I said before, one of the things that's ongoing right now in the town is conversion from software to Munis. It's happened in several of the modules already up and running. I'm wondering if you could talk about your comfort level with stepping into a community that's going through that circuit?
So I, my last position, like I said, I stepped into a software conversion that was probably only 25% done. I stepped in it at a time that we were trying to close the balance sheet, do Schedule A. It was a stressful time. I was able to roll up my sleeves and really kind of look behind the scenes, check out the debits and credits, make sure things were flowing correctly. I will say it was challenging because I didn't know the software. Munis, I'm very comfortable with. Gloucester Public School System uses Munis as well as the city side, which has been helpful. I kind of, I guess I'm a geek. I love, I love Munis. It's actually the Cadillac of financial software. There are some hurdles to get through, but once it is set up correctly, it is a wonderful product. It's just getting there and working out the kinks and taking it by a step-by-step approach. It can't be done like a big overview. You just kind of have to take each module and make sure, check it, make sure everything is flowing correctly to the balance sheet. Sometimes that involves going one transaction at a time, and that's something that I've done in my past and had to do. My last community had an issue with cash, so we had to go through every transaction and try to figure out what was going on with that and come up with a process. And I actually worked with Mike Morris on that as well. So he was my consultant in West Newbury. I just wanted to add, I noticed in your resume that you actually did training for Munis as well. Yep. Need to train up from. I trained, yeah. So all the new staff that come to Gloucester Public Schools that have Munis access, I sit down and train, train them. So it could be a secretary, sometimes it's a principal to approve requisitions. We do purchase orders for every single item that we want to buy. So we put them in there and they flow through workflow. So you have no problem. Very good understanding of. I'm kind of, I'm very hands-on, I've always been. I've trained many individuals from all levels and it's important to make sure everyone feels comfortable with what they're using. And it just, in the long run, it makes everything run smoothly, at least in my experience. It takes a little while to get there, though, in patience, but.
I think only a strong candidate for this position would admit to being excited at the moment.
I know.
See that as another. Anybody else?
In the job description, it says special requirements to be obtained. And it says Mass Municipal Auditor and Accountants Association Certificate, certification, which if you're a member of the group, I'm assuming that you have that certification.
Yes, so I got certified, was it in two or three years? I think it was three years ago now. I go to the annual conference. There's actually three Mass Municipal Conferences a year. There's one in the fall, I believe it's the first Thursday in November. It's a day conference at Fort Devens. Then there's the annual education program in March at UMass Amherst. And then there is the summer program. I feel it's really important to keep up with professional development and also talk to my peers and make sure that we're all on the same page. I have a good connection as well with DOR. I was actually at a training earlier down in the hot with the DOR members there, which is really great to keep up those connections, personal relationships.
And the other, the other thing it asks for, special requirements to be obtained, it says, Massachusetts Certified Procurement Officer Design. Do you have that training at all?
So I don't have that training. I've always had a procurement manager where I've worked. I know the Mass General laws and I'm willing to get that certification if needed. There's a lot of classes to take to get that, but I'm happy to do that if it's needed.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just have one follow-up.
Please.
Finance Committee, how was your experience working, you know, with the Finance Committee? And how does that, you know, how do you feel about that? I mean, obviously you have a finance committee, but, you know, just your interaction with them, you know, what do you think? I've had, in my career so far, I've had great, great interactions, to be honest. I kind of, I love the budget work, working hand-in-hand with them. I've had no problems. When we get new members, it was a little bit of a challenge to kind of explain municipal government because it's very different than the private sector. So kind of going through that, but I've always had a positive experience with that and been able to provide answers in a timely fashion, for sure.
One more question, if you wouldn't mind. When I first got your resume, going through it, I'm like, it seemed like you were involved with the public school side of me quite a bit. And I started thinking that would just be, would this cause an issue? Where the school side must project completely and they're going to have to come to money, have to come for money from the town. And I was first looking at saying that where you know the public school side of it, you would favor funding their projects over something that would, the town, the town is all would be favored. Would you, if the school department came and said, we're going to need X amount of dollars, you would review what, what they're requesting, see if we're going to be able to put it into the budget? Or tell them, no, we're not going to be able to do it this year? In other words, you would just favor the school side? You know, where you're so versed in the school side of funding?
So I've only, just to clarify, I've only been on the school side for just shy of two years. The rest of my municipal career has been all on, on the town side of government. I don't, like I said, I wouldn't favor, favor that side over the town side. It's important to kind of look at the big picture. I'm a very big-picture person. Currently, I'm in a role, I'm in the school system, so, you know, that's different in my role I am in now. But in the past, when I was in Ipswich, per se, I was, I was in the finances and I didn't favor the school over the town or vice versa.
I, I don't mean to pit one side against the other.
Oh, no, yeah.
Don't think of it that way. It's just that with so many projects going on in the town, finance is going to stuck intact. You can only go as a people so many times before there's an uprising. And I, I was just concerned that, I, I just wanted to hear that you would do what's best for the balance, for the budget of the town.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I wondered, we talked a lot about, you know, your municipal experience and your public school experience. And I wondered if you could elaborate on your private sector experience, how that might be an asset to you in this position?
Sure, so fresh out of college, I always wanted that big corporate job. I thought it would be great. Sure. So fresh out of college, I always wanted that big corporate job. I thought it would be great for me. A little bit about my background for that. I grew up in Hamilton, which is a very small community. I'm not really a big city person. Graduated from Westfield State and I said, I want to go work in the city, have that nice corner office. So off I went. I worked for State Street Bank and Trust for a long time, for about just shy of ten years, might have been ten years. I learned a lot of things there. I learned a lot about professionalism, just pretty much all, a lot of the skills that I have now, I've acquired there, kind of my multitasking, working very, very hard. I take my work very seriously. Kind of the tipping point there was, I spent a lot of time commuting. I was leaving on a train at five-ten in the morning from Ipswich and I wasn't getting back until close to ten at night when a train broke down. And it just, I didn't have that work-life balance. It was a great experience while I was there. But I wanted to kind of work more for our communities. At the time, my parents were both born, living in Ipswich. They were born and raised and graduates there. So I thought I was open to a wonderful opportunity to give back to my community. And that's kind of where I got down the municipal track. But I learned a lot of skills there, time management, pretty much everything. I was kind of thrown into everything. When you're in the corporate sector, it's very different than municipal. It's very fast-paced. It's taken me a long time to kind of slow down a little bit in my work.
I thought getting into this back, I was kind of.
I did go around the circle a few times.
We do that to all the people at my. Anybody else? How about, is there anything that we missed? Anything you want to light the sun that we didn't touch upon? Anything you want to add and close with before we conclude here?
No, I think that you guys all asked wonderful questions. Like I said, I'm honored to be here. I appreciate you guys taking me in here for an interview. I will say, I've known the position was posted for a long time. Personally and professionally, I had to see if this was the avenue that I would like to really apply for. People have been telling me about it for a while. Back in June, I actually talked to the assistant town accountant about the role, again, just to see if I would be a good fit. I wanted to make sure that with my skill, my skill set and everything, that I'd be a good fit. And I feel like I am a great fit for Wilmington.
Really appreciate you coming in and interviewing us, answering all our questions and obviously having a very impressive resume. And I think we look forward to checking references. And just to be clear with you on what you might expect, I think we'll probably hear from us in the future, probably from our town manager will probably communicate with you in the near future about what our plans are. And with that, we will, we'll wish you a good evening. We really appreciate you coming in and we will be in touch.
It was nice to meet everyone.
Likewise.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right. Just very quickly, I'll just, we did do this before. We took a quick break, waiting for applicant to come in, but I'll just double-check and see if there's any public comments. Want to make sure if we're going to be getting initial feedback here this evening. Doesn't look like anybody wants to make a public comment, so we'll move on. We're actually, I'm going to be looking for a very specific motion, if you're willing to support it, in just a moment. We're looking for a motion to adjourn into executive session for the purpose of discussing strategies with respect to collective bargaining as it relates to the International Association of Firefighters Local 1370 in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 3, and for the purpose of discussing strategy and with respect to collective bargaining as it relates to negotiation with non-union personnel, i.e. finance director, in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 2.
I would make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Discussion, sure. Not to return.
Not to return. Thank you for that addition. Your motion will allow for that?
Yes, it will.
It is still seconded, maintaining a second. Is there any further discussion? Thank you, Mr. West. Call for a vote, a roll call, vote, please.
Garrett Abamo, yes.
William Felli, yes.
Frank West, yes.
Red Benel, yes. Thank you for joining us and good night.